All right. Good evening, everyone. It's five thirty one P M on July twenty fifth, twenty twenty four. A meeting of the school committee. I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Burnham for member access.
Good evening, everyone. As a preliminary matter, this is Dr. Burnham Superintendent of Schools. I will do a roll call to confirm that all members and persons anticipated on the agenda are present and can hear me. Members, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Chair, Mr. Brian Leighton.
Yes.
Vice Chair, Mr. Anthony Schoolenbrini. Mr. Schoolenbrini will not be joining us this evening. Secretary, Mrs. Carol Ashambo.
Yes.
Mr. Peter Beardmore.
Yes.
And Mrs. Laura Bezowski.
Yes.
Staff, when I call your name, please respond. Uh, Recording Secretary, Ms. Courtney Fuller.
Yes.
And this evening, we also have um my executive assistant, uh Liz Peterson on the line. Liz, can you hear us?
Yes.
Okay, then I'll turn it back to the chair.
Thank you. Uh, good evening, everyone. In accordance with the requirements of the open meeting law, please be advised that this meeting is being recorded. It will be broadcast over the Lunenburg Public Access Channel and streaming on Facebook Live at a later time. And this meeting of the Lunenburg School Committee is being conducted remotely. In accordance with the governor's order suspending certain divisions of the open meeting law, public meetings may be conducted remotely. The order which can you can find posted on the town website on the COVID nineteen Information Center page, access through the towns manager webpage allows public bodies to meet entirely remotely. So as long as reasonable public access is afforded so that the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. Ensuring public access does not ensure public participation unless such participation is required by law. This meeting will feature public comment. For this meeting, the Lunenburg School Committee is convening by tele- telephone conference, video conference via Zoom app, Facebook Live, et cetera, as posted on the town's website identifying how the public may join. For Zoom meetings, please note that this meeting is being recorded and that some attendees are participating by video conference. Accordingly, accordingly, please be aware that other folks may be able to see you and that you take you take care not to screen share your computer. Anything that you broadcast may be captured by the recording. Meeting business ground rules. We are now turning to the first item on the agenda. Before we do so, permit me to cover some ground rules for effective and clear conduct for our of our business and to ensure accurate meeting minutes. Hi, Brian Leighton and the chair will introduce each speaker on the agenda after they conclude their remarks. The chair will go down the line of members inviting each by name to provide any comment, questions, or motions. Please hold until your name is called. Please remember to mute your phone or computer when you are not speaking. Speak clearly and in a way that helps generate accurate minutes. For any response, please wait until the chair yields the floor to you and state your name before speaking. If members wish to engage locally with other members, please do so through the chair, taking care to identify yourself. For items with public comment, after members have spoken, the chair will afford public comment as follows. The chair will ask members of the public who wish to speak to identify their names and addresses only. Once the chair has a list of all public commentators, I will call on each by name and afford three minutes for any comments. Finally, each book, each vote taken in this meeting will be conducted by roll call votes. Right, so on to the agenda. Uh, first off, there's public comments. Has anyone had any public comments? Mr. Beardmore?
Did look for the hand raise, but it doesn't seem to be available on my computer, so it might be a it might be a Zoom configuration or um, I have two comments tonight. Uh, I'll be as brief as I can. Uh, the first is I want to uh acknowledge uh the the loss of Marguerite Okerman. Um, Mrs. Okerman was a pillar of our community for apologies, dogs are going crazy. Was a a pillar of our community for for generations. Um, and um was a librarian in our school systems for twenty years, I believe. Uh, at the same time as her husband was uh Bob Okerman was our facilities director in Lunenburg. Uh, and um they were visible all the time. Uh, they were part of that cadre of of stewards of our community that I have frequently spoken about. And uh, the Okermans were were very much a part of that that community at the time uh and have continued to be such and play that role um well into their uh elderly years and uh I wish uh her and Mr. uh Mr. Okerman and their family uh my deepest sympathy. Um, the second thing that I I do want to uh make mention of um is not something that I I relish, but I think it needs to be mentioned. Um, last week, there was a a change made in the payroll systems for Lunenburg Public Employees. Uh, and it happened as a result of um really a a policy that that shouldn't have been in place, and this really amounts to a correction uh to be able to pay overtime in a timely manner and to pay our employees in arrears uh from the time that they worked in it. The 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 logic of it makes good sense to me. Um, but the transition for going to that um does involve disruption, substantial disruption if you're on the receiving end of a paycheck. Uh, and you don't get the amount of money that you anticipated getting on payday. Uh, and unfortunately, due to a variety of circumstances, um, I do not believe that our employees were clearly communicated with um proactively communicated with uh or communicated with in a in a an appropriately timely manner. Uh, and I'm not saying that to cast blame. I think ultimately uh, once again, we failed in teamwork between the town and the schools to ensure that this is going to happen in a better way. Um, but I think we should acknowledge the miss uh pledge to do better. Uh, and and you know, as we make the transition to uh a new town manager and 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 new leadership at Town Hall, uh, really building uh a a true team uh uh with our with our uh partners at the town. And and I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Beardmore. Anyone else for a public comment? All right, seeing none, we're going to move on to the agenda item. Uh, next agenda item is review and approve minutes. Um, my recommendation would be to go one at a one at a time. If there's any motions, we have uh May twenty second, twenty twenty four, June sixth, twenty 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 four, and a special session on March eleventh, twenty twenty four. Miss Bezowski?
Um, can we pass over May twenty second? I wanted to make a correction, but I didn't get a chance to yet. Um.
That way everybody has time to make corrections. So do we have any motions for the June fifth, twenty twenty four, or the special session in March eleven, twenty twenty? Miss Archibald?
Um, I had a problem with the March eleventh minutes and I looked and it hasn't been corrected. The numbers are not clear. So I think that needs to be done. It stated that our um five point four two budget was the um um level service minus S R, which is an eight point six two budget. And having lived with those numbers a lot, um, I don't want the wrong numbers in the minutes. So I think those need to be corrected.
Not to table those as well. Uh, do we have any motion for the June fifth, twenty twenty four minutes?
Um, move to approve the minutes for June fifth.
You have a second?
I can second that.
Any discussions? My Dr. Burnham, I need to go ready for a roll call vote on the June fifteenth.
Mrs. Bezowski?
Yes.
Mr. Beardmore?
Yes.
Mrs. Ashambo?
Yes.
And Mr. Leighton?
Yes. Thank you, everyone. Next item on the agenda is new business action item, the ARPA requests. Let's turn this over to Dr. Burnham.
So we received notification through the town manager that they were um uh, the select board was looking for a new wave of requests for the remaining ARPA monies. Um, and they were uh seeking submissions by um the end of this month. Uh, so that's why we scheduled this meeting so that the school committee could have some conversation. Uh, I did provide you a list of possible things for your consideration. Um. I also, you know, would would open up uh consideration of anything that you think um you may like to pull off of that ten year capital plan. Um. But uh, you have some some suggestions, um, things that are not currently uh on the capital plan. And those things would include uh installation of a generator at the primary school. Um, that would uh keep our boiler room and kitchen for freezer and refrigeration uh running in the event of a prolonged power outage. Um, middle high school concession stand field house uh being transitioned over from a hard key lock system uh to a key card reader system. Um, that gives us greater um security of the facility as when those cards are lost, they can be uh shut off as well as um the time and days period of a time like a a season, let's say, um where the keys can be activated. Um, we also have on the list uh some upgrades to the uh auditorium booth. That largely would impact um the audio support. Um, and I also, um, again, this one here is on the uh, the ten year capital plan, the phase two for the primary school A C project. Um, based on increased costs, uh, we were uh we were coming up short for phase one. Um, two classrooms. Um. So based on the number of classrooms that uh we are able to install, uh, given the amount of funding that we got for phase one. Um, I've given you an estimate uh based on those numbers for what the cost would would be to finish phase two. Um, again, that's an estimate. I don't have a quote. Um. Could get you one. Um. The other estimate is the the cost for the generator at the primary school. We had um we did get a quote, but it was for the entire building being put over to a generator backup. We don't need the entire building on a generator backup. We we really just need to keep the boiler room and the kitchen on a generator backup. Um, so in speaking with the vendor that came out to give that um that first quote, um, the vendor who the the individual who came out to quote the project in the first place has retired effective last week. Um, it it's a problem that we keep running into, quite frankly. Um, so not knowing enough about the actual site, um, I've asked for somebody else to come out uh onsite again so that they can give us an actual quote for just the kitchen and the boiler room, but they they gave me a an estimate of about seventy thousand on that one.
Bezowski?
Um, where are we with the primary school dishwasher replacement?
I believe that we did move ahead with that, so um that's not something that we would need to um put on that. Um, we were able to um use funds from the school lunch program. It is allowable. There were enough funds, so we were able to go ahead with that.
Now for the ARPA funds, is this capital plan minimum base number? Is this any number? Or they're just kind of looking for bigger numbers too? If those are minimum.
You know, it that was not something that was conveyed as to um a cost range for for submissions?
I'll open it up to the committee for questions. Yeah. Mr. Beardmore?
Uh, I have a number of questions and and comments here. Um, with respect to the the generator, um, do we have power generation in the other school buildings?
We do have backup generation in the others.
Okay. Um. So on the uh on the A C project, um, there there have been comments made in recent meetings at both select board meetings and capital planning committee meetings um relating to the the Green Communities Program uh and the I I would say with a degree of certainty at this point that that is an automatic question now for all capital planning items is, you know, ha- has this gone through a a discussion with the 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 Green Committee and wha- what's its uh availability? Mr. Blatt spoke at a select board meeting a few weeks ago, uh, and he specifically called out this program. Um, and uh apparently, according to him, uh, the the current project is eligible for green communities rebates. Um, but that the contractor needs to provide some documentation and things need to be submitted. I I'm paraphrasing here. I don't um. I would very much like to see this thing funded. Um, I don't think that the select board is going to give us, you know, a hundred and sixty six thousand dollars for it, but any amount that amounts to a new condenser in two more classrooms, I think would be positive momentum. But I can't see the select board giving us the money if we haven't gone through the full process in terms of recouping the money that 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 um may be available. So could you comment on that and
Sure.
help me there?
Yep. So um Mr. Heavy, when he came on board, um, knowing that the Green Communities uh funding was part and parcel of the conversation around this project when we were at special town meeting in November, uh, seeking the the green light to go ahead with the project. Um, he actually spoke with somebody uh with the Green Communities, not our committee in town. Um, but somebody who understands the process and and what types of projects would be funded. And he went over um a number of the projects that we have on our capital plan. Um, and he was told that no, for a variety of reasons, um basically much of what we've got on our capital plan uh would not be eligible. Um. Our understanding is that um the the mini splits might have been eligible if if this was going to become the heat source uh for heating the building, which um it 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 wouldn't be because we would have to make sure that all areas of the building um could be covered by these types of units. Um, and right now the plan for phase two only um only considers the small office spaces that don't have um access to windows, so interior type small office spaces. Um, and and the classrooms. So the cafeteria, the gymnasium, um corridors, uh would not be covered under under the model that we've been looking at. Um, we can certainly uh do one uh one last inquiry to verify. Um. I don't know if things have changed that would make the project eligible for some reimbursement. Um, but the conversation that Mr. Heavy had was several months ago. Um. Part and parcel of his attending the first uh couple of um Green Communities meetings when when he first came on board back in the fall.
Okay, um. Unfortunately, that doesn't put my mind at ease in terms of the the probability of getting this thing approved, given the the narrative that currently exists in town.
Mm hmm.
Um. Uh, by the way, I think we need to have a liaison at all Green Communities meetings, and these kinds of issues need to be tied off on. And and we need to have agreement with them, not conflicting information between select board and school committee meetings, which is as of two minutes ago, what we have. Uh.
Well, I'll have to reach out to Mr. Blatt and make sure that I'm included on um any notices about meetings that are coming up uh because it was my understanding and I conveyed to this committee uh when we had this conversation about making sure that we had a liaison to the Green Communities, that Mr. Heavy said that he would be
Yeah.
our liaison to those meetings. I don't I don't know if he's missed meetings.
Yeah, nor nor do I. And I'm not suggesting that, but I am saying that we have conflicting information being shared publicly, so that that needs to be resolved.
Okay.
Um. One other, I, so there are two other items that are not here that I I would just, I think we need some some discussion on. Uh, the first is the track and field complex. Um, so we received ARPA money for a study on the track and field complex to the tune of fifty thousand dollars, I believe. Um, and I believe we have a draft report or a near final report or a final report at this point. Um, I I I haven't received it. I don't believe yet. Um, but the fifty thousand dollars only got us so far as the hill down to the track. Um, but not a- a- and up into the turf, basically. Um, and there's been some uh some good recommendations made around what needs to be done to the support system under the the uh press box, um, the wall behind the bleachers and the walkway and the retaining wall uh and the the drainage that runs behind that. It's also been noted that there's insufficient drainage around the track itself. We have drainage around the curves of the track um and drains at the corners of the of the turf. But we do not have drains that run the hundred and twenty yards of the of the um the turf itself. Uh, and it's believed that that is that combined with the the space to the west up the hill are are combined problems. Um, however, the study did not go under the track itself and really scope out the drainage that is happening at the track and field uh uh space itself. And the 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 problem there is that, number one, it's incomplete. Um, but number two, we're really soon going to need new turf. Uh, that turf is wore out and at the end of its life expectancy. And I feel hard pressed to go and ask for new turf or to borrow more money to put down new turf until we have a definitive plan around the drainage under the turf.
Mm hmm.
Um, and so um Dr. Burnham and I met with Mr. Heavy a week or two ago, and we discussed this. I would like to ask for enough money to complete the project that they've already contributed to. Um, but I can't put a finger on what that number is, right? Is it twenty five thousand dollars? Is it another fifty thousand dollars? I don't know, but but I'd like to know and like to be able to request that if we if we could. Um. The other, the other item that that I, and I did look at the the five year capital plan at Dr. Burnham's suggestion this week. Um, trying to put a finger on what might be things that we could move in. Um. The one that that did strike me because we we have been turned down for, I believe, two years in a row uh on vehicles is there is a a plow truck and 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 sander uh that was a twenty five ask that was not approved. Um. I I've since gotten mixed signals from Mr. Heavy and yourself, Dr. Burnham, in terms of the need for a a new truck. Um, so I, and and obviously, this precedes the capital planning discussions that we're inevitably going to have next month, but um but I figured it we should bring it up now because it it did not rise above the, you know, uh, above the line the last two years, and and sooner or later, we might need a new vehicle, so.
Thank you, Mr. Beardmore. Laura?
Uh, Kevin, uh, Carol had her hand up, but I had a quick question. Where did the primary driveway plan and the primary um design for a new playground fall in the capital plan? Was that or above or below?
Below.
Okay. Because I I really do think we might want to take a look at that be because the primary driveway is is an issue from a safety perspective that's been ongoing. I don't know if any of you guys have tried to pick up your kids and had to sit in that traffic um or seen the backup that occurs, but I I think that might be something we want to ask for. I don't know if that would be something we can encumber by, what is it, December?
I I would suspect that we could, well, we would have to have a contract in place, and the design work itself, I think, would prob- we would barely get a contract in place for the design. Uh, you know, you have to study it, design it, implement it.
I would, I would, I would suggest just asking for the money for the study or the or or a design or a study to see if it's even feasible. I don't even know if it's feasible to change that driveway.
Thank you, Dawn.
Yeah, so there was, so so just for everybody. Sorry to interrupt, Mr. Chair.
Good.
Um. The capital plan request last year was for an entryway driveway expansion phase one assessment. Uh, and it was thirty thousand dollars.
Um. That is helpful. Miss Archibald?
That was below the threshold, right?
Yeah, it was below.
Miss Archibald?
My thoughts on this was if there is a way, after listening to Mr. Beardmore, if there is a way to get the additional funds to do the turf study correctly, I think that should be a priority. It doesn't make any sense at all to do half a job. Um, I think that's important. My thought on those projects that um Dr. Burnham set forth, I'm a little nervous about asking for more A C project money at this point in time for the exact reasons Mr. Beardmore said with all the Green Community things out there. Um, the auditorium booth updates to me I think might be attractive to the select board because of the frustration in setting up town meeting. And whatever other meetings we have in there that nobody can hear anybody talk. So I think that might be money that we could very possibly get. Um, would be would be my thought, and I also think it's very important, not just for town meeting, but for what goes on in the school, and to keep that equipment under key card access is huge because people keep playing with the knobs and and the settings all go berserk. And and that is basically what ends up happening. So um, that would be my suggestion. The other thing I just wanted to mention, and I would have um mentioned this to Mr. Leighton and ahead of time, however, it occurred about an hour ago, I ran into um Mr. Bernard who told me that the sidewalk project is ready to roll. So I said to him, is that using um ARPA funds that we requested and got and gave back and or is it using your funds? And he said he didn't know. So I thought that was interesting, but um regardless of where that funding is coming from, he says that project is ready to go, so I wanted to make that comment as well.
Uh, I think the town manager reported very recently that there was a chapter ninety submission that was approved by the state. I'm not a hundred percent sure if that was included in that in that submission, but there was a substantial submission that was approved.
Thank you, Mr. Beardmore. Thank you, Miss Archibald. Uh, my comments, uh, I would agree with Miss Archibald. I actually was going to say the same thing, that I think we should actually, if we could Dr. Burnham reword the um the auditorium information and kind of like sell it a little bit more to the town hall meeting. It's the special town meeting is that it will affect those and even maybe bump it to the top of the list, so it really stands out. Um, in regards to the A C project, when we're talking about the A C project, I'm fine if we leave it out. I just also thought maybe we could even break it down into, say, ten A Cs for this dollar amount or eight A Cs for this dollar amount. Um, so that way, if they wanted to fund a partial project, even that might go better. My thought too is also just include everything because everything, because maybe it's they have forty thousand left over and this is the pro, they're looking for a forty thousand dollar project. The schools had a forty thousand dollar project or they have sixty left over, we need to sell, get rid of the sixty. Let's hit that school project that had sixty. So I think multiple projects with different price points, I think is a better selling point, too. I'm hesitant to take stuff off. I'm okay if we take off the ACs, but I'm kind of also hesitant that they might be looking for a certain price point that finishes the funding. And like I said, I I would agree with Laura. I think the the primary school projects could be good, another one where it's a different price point that they might just fund it because they had thirty thousand left over, they didn't know what to do with it. So I would say support it, but I'm open to suggestions or emotion at this point, or further discussion if you want to keep discussing. Oh, and also I want to thank Dr. Burnham, too, for reaching out to Chief Campbell, too, on possible collaboration.
So I'm just trying to think through this in terms of what are some of the other things that I'm aware of of being are being applied for and that sort of thing and, you know, what what these things are competing with and and you know, so far as I'm aware, there's a very big ask from the sewer department for relating to some some improvements that need to be made in the sewer and upkeep of various sewer components. Part of critical infrastructure that is very much aligned to the the spirit of the ARPA bill that was was passed several years ago. And I'm I'm thinking about these in terms of what what could potentially contribute to lessening the long term financial burdens that we are going to have to deal with anyway. Right? We're participating in a in a committee right now to 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 deal with the the financial health of the town. And I think that thinking about things that are otherwise going to land as high priority items on the capital plan. I I think that there's a there's a case to be made that if you're going to spend ARPA funds on something, they should not be something that might otherwise be considered a nice to have. So I I'm not, again, I'm not against seeing anything off of here. My preference would be to get a number on the the track and field study and put that at the top of the list. Because I I do want to get a request in to do a project there. But we can't do it until we know what the story is. And and in my mind, that's a high priority. And I I tend to agree with the the auditorium things. I think that that is a direct enhancement to the quality of services that we deliver to grades six through twelve or in that building. And every time I go into that auditorium, there's an audio problem. So we should seek to fix that.
Uh, my suggestion for the tact we should take is, I think, Brian, you you definitely had it right as far as yeah, ask for more than one thing. I think maybe if we went in with one core thing, saying this is our big ask, this is our this is the thing we're mainly asking for. Here's a list of other projects that are available in our little sales pitch for you to choose from. Here's what they're going to cost. Here's where they are on our priority list. And here's who it's gonna affect and 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 the reasons why and which constituents it affects, but maybe the auditorium booth update is the main one or the turf fields, but I think both are good ones. And then smaller amount items, too. I think the AC project is a little bit of a reach unless we break it down into like a very smaller chunk.
I I would also suggest that given this feedback, I I'm not sure that we need to vote on a specific motion. This is a request of department heads. And I think we should make this feedback to the superintendent and empower her to compile this as we have guided her to do so and let her do it.
I would agree. Dr. Brenham, do you feel like you have the information that you need to send to the select board?
So I just, I I certainly can reach out to the engineer who conducted the assessment of the turf complex area minus the turf and find out what it would cost to have a similar assessment of the turf track area itself. And I can get a price tag for that. Is everybody in agreement that that's the number one ask?
I am.
I'm okay with that.
Okay.
I'm okay with that, although I I do think the auditorium booth would be likely to be funded because it is both a school and a community issue. And it directly affects the select board and town government. But the turf field is one of those, if we deal with it now, it's going to save us money down the line, so. Yeah, I am okay with the turf field as well.
Okay, so those would be the two priority requests. Do you want me to submit the rest as as a list of other potential for consideration? And and let them decide what they rule in or out, depending on how much available funding they have.
That was my thought with whatever they have left, they might be
But I would take the AC phase two at the primary school off the list.
I agree, yeah. Keep, keep in mind, keep in mind these projects have to be contracted by the thirty first of December, so if like a partial payment to something that we don't otherwise have funding for, might as well be zero, because like we we gotta be able to contract a project before the thirty first of December.
So given that we've already worked with an engineer to come out to assess you know, our drainage issues with behind the bleachers, the retaining wall, the fence and all of that. We have someone that that we can reach out directly to give me a a price for what it would take to do a similar assessment of the turf itself and the track around relative to drainage and what would it cost to do that work and replace the turf once that work is done. So I should be able to get that relatively quickly and then get that under contract and done. Because I I suspect that the cost of that is not going to be significant enough anyway that we would, you know, be beholden to putting out to bid and and so on and so forth. The quotes for the the different projects relative to the auditorium booth, I've I've got the quote in hand from a vendor who can do the the actual tech upgrades that that need to be done. And I also have a quote for the the installation of a key card on the booth. So it's a matter of if these were to be funded, just moving ahead and and scheduling the work with with the vendors that have given us those quotes.
That needs to go, that needs to go in our sales pitch to the select board as well, then, that we are ready to go. We have an accurate quote and we are ready to pull the trigger as soon as possible and this project will get done. Because it what?
I'm sorry, I I just had one more left field thought here on the on the auditorium booth. One of the things that came up in capital planning last year was a request from the library to upgrade their sound system in the community room in the front to include what was called an audio loop.
Yes.
Which is something that is designed to interface with modern hearing aids. So gone are the days where they pass out a headset for hearing impaired people. Now they just press a button and your hearing aid hears what's coming out of the speakers. And I have heard directly from my neighbor, Drew Benatley, who does not attend town meeting anymore because he can't hear what's going on. And in my mind, this is a this is a like a democracy kind of thing. It's a, you know, like and if if there might be a way to see if that could be added to that or included, I would really like to see that happen.
Okay. All right, I'll ask our tech folks to reach out and and see if they can get that quote revised to include something like that. I really have no idea what that
I want to say the, I want to say the estimate for the for the library was like eleven thousand dollars or something like that, if I remember the number.
I think they're pretty close, Peter.
Yeah. Enfranchisement, that's the word I was looking for. Popped into my head.
Okay. All right, we can get on that.
Yeah, from the select board, it sounds like what they're interested is projects that will be executed and the money will not go to waste, so I think the ones that we know that we can execute on, like the auditorium booth, for the, do we have a firm? No, it would have to go to bid for the for the driveway for the primary school.
That would be a bidding process.
Okay.
And I believe that thirty thousand dollars was an estimate.
Okay. All right, although I feel like generally it's they bid what we have.
Not recently.
Thank you, everyone. Dr. Burnham, do you feel like you have enough information?
Yes, so I can, I've actually asked for the folks who gave us the original quote on the generator to schedule, they need to align with a an electrician needs to come out and and be part of that visit with them. So they're working to set that up to get out to get us a revised quote, but again, they gave me an an estimate. And then I do have quotes from a vendor on key card installation on the concession stand field house building. So again, if we were to receive funding for that, it's a matter of, you know, can't, you know, getting the the vendor contracted to come out and and take care of that. So I can leave those projects on the list as for their consideration, but emphasize that our priorities are for the additional funding to complete the assessment of the turf complex as well as the funding for the upgrades to the auditorium booth. And I'll I'll get our tech folks working on the added request from this evening relative to hearing aid compatibility on that. So I'll I'll list those as the two priority asks, and I'll put together the rest as an optional list that they could consider.
Where did we land on the replacement vehicle we were gonna?
I think that that you know, we we could consider that. I my my guess is that, given conversations relative to shared department for efficiencies and cost savings, I suspect they would not want to purchase another vehicle for us until those conversations were had.
Very good point.
But I I think that we definitely need to continue to carry that ask in the capital plan and make a case for that. I think honestly, given what we know that we're short staffed and historically, the DPW has also had trouble being fully staffed, knowing that they've had challenges getting their fleet to be more current. I think that even if there were one singular department, we would still need all of the staff and all of the vehicles and all of the equipment that we use on the grounds. So I don't think that there's any real cost savings to be had merging into one shared department. But that those are conversations for for another meeting, another time, but I I suspect that we'll we'll carry that request for the 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 vehicle in the capital plan that we bring forward to you for consideration next month. We, just an update relative to that, we will need to schedule a meeting so that we can discuss capital plan in August because Mr. Beardmore has relayed to me that there's going to be an accelerated timeline for the capital planning committee this year to consider asks, so they're moving, they're moving that timeline up. So in order for us to get it to the town manager's office to be then shared with the capital planning committee, it it's got to be approved by the school committee before we send it. So Mr. Beardmore's thought was that we would want to take a vote on that at the September fourth meeting. So we'll definitely have to schedule a meeting in August so that we can give you access to the capital plan and you can all discuss and ask questions regarding that plan. Mr. Hevy and I are are working on it, and I've also brought Dr. Gilson in on that work as well. So again, we'll, I'll be reaching out to schedule the meeting. I still have the the dates that everyone told me that they could be available, so I I have a short list of dates where everyone was going to be available. Please know that I am still working with follow up emails and phone conversations, still working to get a commitment on a date that we can have somebody come in and and do a workshop for the school committee relative to finance and best practice. And I can tell you that our finance consultant, Dr. Livingston, is working with me to try to 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 get a date solidified. If we can do them all on the same evening, that that would be fine. Otherwise, we may have to do two meetings, and I know that Mr. Layton had wanted also to revisit the operating protocols as part of a workshop meeting. So potentially, we have one slightly longer meeting in August versus two one shorter, one maybe not as short, meeting in August. Stay tuned, I'm working to nail down dates on all of that.
Does anybody have anything else on the ARPA requests? All right, and then move on to public comments. Any other public comments, additional public comments?
Not seen any public comments in the public.
All right, I'll look for a motion to adjourn at six nineteen PM.
Motion to adjourn?
Thank you. Roll call vote, please.
Mrs. Brusowski?
Yes.
Mr. Beardmore?
Yes.
Mrs. Ashenbo?
Yes.
And Mr. Layton?
Yes.
Thank you all. I'll get that all put together and I will make sure that you receive a copy of what I submit.
You, Dr. Burnham.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good night.
You, too.